Pursuant to the Civil Public Beings Act, Chapter 231 Public Clause in 1975, this meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on August 1st, 2017. That has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of August 3rd, 2017. All municipal clerks with the townships and bars within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting notices have been met on August 1st, 2017. You can all stand for the pledge of allegiance. Now please remain standing afterwards.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last wing? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
We should sing in here more often. Okay, we'd like to do one more for you. This is a piece in Spanish entitled "Esto les digo."
Esto les digo. Esto les digo. Si los de ustedes se ponen, si los de ustedes se ponen, se ponen en el pueblo, aquí en, en la ciela, para pedir, para pedir, pedir algo en oración. Mi padre que está en el cielo, en el cielo, en el cielo, se lo dará, se lo dará, porque donde dos o tres, porque donde dos o tres, porque donde dos o tres se le den mi nombre. Ahí estoy yo, ahí estoy yo, en medio de ellos, en medio de ellos. Esto les digo, esto les digo,
Well, this is the honor at the end on a little solo. Okay.
Thank you, folks. Yes, thank you, Mr. Brod.
There you go.
Okay, before moving on, I want to hand it over to the Board of Education for attendance. It just points clarification. In addition to the items listed on the agenda and discussed in the second session, the Board also discussed item number four. An update on cyber negotiations with the FRBA. The Board also discussed an update on negotiations with the Freehold Supervisors Association. And number seven, the Board did not discuss docket number MON-L2719-17 listed on the agenda. The Board did discuss an update on negotiations, ongoing negotiations with municipalities for shared services agreements. Also under number seven, the Board discussed a possible agreement with the FRBA in connection with a resignation. That was all in respect. Okay, with respect to seat one, approval of meeting minutes. Does anybody want to put forth a motion to adopt the resignation accepting minutes, both from the regular meeting on April 23rd and the public hearing for our budget on April 3rd?
No, it's in.
Second. I heard ten. All right.
Mrs. Cappiello?
Yes.
Mr. Corolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankeller?
Yes.
Mrs. Lattin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Sotera?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Respect to communications. Was there any communication received over the last seven, seven, three, four, five minutes?
None to the Board.
All right then. We will move on to the superintendent report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Messinger. So, a few things. Obviously, we were originally supposed to be in the auditorium, but we are now going to sing our way through this entire meeting. You guys didn't know this, right? It was part of the presentation. But I hope you're ready. I'm sure Mr. Dillon fills you in. You know, with the past fifteen days.
They're ready.
So, a couple of things. I want to open up first, and I'll ask Mr. Diaz to come up with Mr. Messinger as well. So, each year, the Freehold Regional High School District sponsors a Teen Driver Safety Program poster conversation, competition. And this is a big deal. This banner flies all year round in the district, goes up into like the Hall of Fame of the banners that we have. And we take it very seriously. We have a wonderful teen driver safety program here in the district that we're very, very proud of. And each of the six high schools has a nominee selected, and then the Board of Education makes a final determination on the winner. So, I would like to, just a few words. This is the final winning design from Ty Blitzstein. So, Ty, come on up with your family. Congratulations. So, Ty is a tenth grader along Public Service Program, JSA, my favorite club of all time. Former advisor, I have to plug that. Incredibly involved. You have, I look at your accolades as a tenth grader, and I'm so impressed. And to have this is sort of out of the box as well. So, incredible accomplishment. We're really proud. You will live forever in the Freehold Regional High School District annals. And I think if you see his design, it's pretty cool. It has the FRHSD logo. And so, we're going to come up for a photo. Come on up, Mr. Diaz. We'll do this. And where's Miss Pollack? Only worry about the one right there. It's the website, and then Mom and Dad. Did you get it?
You're okay, Dan.
You got it? All right, thank you very much. Congratulations. I appreciate it. I keep walking behind the microphone as if it's on. A couple of things. So, we have our biannual Violence and Vandalism Report tonight to the community. And one of the things that we really wanted to do several years ago when we started looking at this required report. And so, folks understand, in some districts, you know, what you're required to do is just literally go through the numbers. And so, sometimes you might see like a thirty-second blip of just the numbers in the school district, and then folks move on. We thought in our district that, you know, we have about ten thousand five hundred teenagers in this district, and we have six awesome high schools with so many programs in each of the high schools happening, and so many programs to help teenagers mitigate poor decision making, right? So, understanding that we have ten thousand five hundred teenagers, that they certainly, we expect our children to make mistakes from time to time. What we really try to do in this district, I think, is to provide a real expansive net of programs, opportunities, supports, connected groups to give students a place to belong and to help them make good decisions, right? To help in that process. Those formative years, ninth grade to twelfth grade, are really tough years. The transition to high school is statistically the most difficult transition that there is in school. And so, we have literally dozens upon dozens upon dozens of clubs and activities and programs designed to help our young people make good decisions. Tonight, I know we have student representatives from Lead for Diversity and peer leaders here as well. So, A, thank you for coming out this evening and taking part in this. Really appreciate that. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dillon to go through the Violence and Vandalism presentation and the rest of the, 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 the. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. So, before I go into the Violence and Vandalism presentation, I'm going to have some of our peer leaders and also our Lead for Diversity students right here from Freehold Borough speak to you about the great things that they do here in the school community and also outside of the community. I thank Ms. Jewell, Principal of Freehold Borough, and also Mrs. Recktenwald, one of the supervisors here, for helping me to organize this. Please listen to what these students do. I think you'll be pretty impressed. Like Mr. Sampson said, these are only two of the very many groups that are here in Freehold Borough High School and also throughout our district. So, without further ado, I'm going to call up Jared to speak to you a little bit about Lead for Diversity.
I'm going to use the microphone because I'm a little sick. So, what Lead for Diversity is, it's really just a great introduction into high school. And I'm glad that you mentioned the transition into high school because my personal experience coming from eighth grade into high school was really hard. But thank God that I had fall sports. And that's a good way to get to know like older, older kids and stuff. But if you weren't to do fall sports, Lead for Diversity is a great way because we do the freshman orientation. I'm sorry. Anyways, not only do we do the freshman orientation, but like, it's more than that. We get to introduce ourselves to the incoming freshmen, and they feel like, like really like close to us, like immediate bond. Like, we joke around with them. We show them around the school. And it's really cool because like, the next day when everyone comes into school, they're like, hey, hey, hey. And you're like, oh, hi. And you kind of remember all their faces. And then, so the next time you see them for LFD is when we do our skits. And I think that each skit has a message that we get out well, but not too overwhelming, not to the point where we're saying like, oh, this is awful. And we make it seem so like negative. Like, because there is positive to everything. And I think that LFD does a good job of showing that. And now, I'm going to call up Dan.
Hi, I'm Dan Flemyer. I'm also a member of LFD. And I'm just going to take you into the actual topics of the skits in which we perform. The first skit in which we performed this year was about harassment, intimidation, and bullying, which we call HIB. And we centered this around the Homecoming Dance Skit, which is obviously relatable to our audience members who all have the opportunity to attend Homecomings. And it was just a lighthearted skit in which we show how harassment, intimidation, and bullying affects the students here at Borough. And then, our second skit is about decision making in which is another lighthearted skit in which we, I dropped the pencil. We show the importance of making good decisions here at high school about not getting into alcohol or drugs and about making all-around good decisions and putting yourself out there in the school community. Our most important skit in which we do here is for the juniors and not the freshmen, is the Teen Driver Safety Skit. We really, it's more of a serious skit. The other skits are centered around like comedy and humor, but this one is really serious because the consequences of not being safe on the roads is extremely dire. So, we really go in depth, and we really show the consequences of what can happen if you're not careful on the roads. And I think it is actually the most important part of LFD. And, yeah, it is an intricate part of our Freehold Borough community. Peer leadership.
Hi, I'm Nick Brophy. I'm a member of Lead for Diversity along with the rest of them. So, I'm just going to elaborate sort of what Jared and Dan touched upon. So, one of the reasons why LFD is so successful in our school community is simply just because of its nature. So, we're a club of juniors and seniors, so we've all been through the process. And so, we sort of know everything that goes on within school and outside of school. So, things like social media, we're very aware. And so, we usually, so we often use that as our insights for the harassment, intimidation, bullying skit. You know, we have a social media aspect that really allows us to show what our insight into the teenage world is. And we're also, we're able to engage our audience because we all have our own personalities. And we're also, we can use that sort of touch with reality that we have, and we sort of understand who our audience is. Whereas if an adult was given this task to present something like this, they might have, it might seem like a lecture, and it might get really boring. But we sort of use what we know and the feeling that we have and the insights that we have to really engage our audience. And we have people like Dan who are usually the comedic relief. So, we sort of intertwine our humor into the message. So, we have fun with it, but we also make sure that our message does get across. So, now I'd like to invite Gianna up to speak about peer leadership.
Okay, my name's Gianna Mapp. I'm a senior here, and I'm in Lead for Diversity as well as Peer Leadership. So, as Jared, Dan, and Nick mentioned, LFD is where we present like skits instead of being one-on-one with the students, the freshmen here especially in Freehold Borough. Now, I'm going to talk to you about Peer Leadership, which I'm excited to talk about because I think it really has a very strong impact on the students here. I know a lot of kids in other schools that are in Peer Leadership because many of the schools in the district have Peer Leadership. I think Freehold Borough's Peer Leadership is extremely incredible. And our students, our freshmen, have personally come up to me and tell me that they, like, we've impacted their lives and they've transitioned into high school. Because, like Jared said, I had a hard time transitioning into this school just because I was very introverted and shy. And now, meeting the seniors that were in Peer Leadership and having them meet one-on-one with us, it makes a difference, for sure. So, to get into Peer Leadership, you have to go through an application process, and it's very serious. So, you need teacher recommendations. You have to write an essay. They look at your, they is the teachers in charge. They look at your grades, your grade point average, and all of that. And like, instead of just selecting random children, you know, kids into this. So, our class is about twenty people. Other years, it was forty or even more. And this year, they really narrowed it down to make sure that our peer leaders are top-notch. So, freshman orientation is the first thing that us peer leaders do where the freshmen come to school early on, and we lead them around the school, show them their classes, and give them little hints about the school. Then we, this Peer Leadership is in class, so we have every single day to plan activities for the freshmen and games and things that we want to do around the school to better the community. And if we're not planning things for the school and for the freshmen, we're learning things such as like about gender roles, hate crimes, motivation and encouragement, and things about racism, diversity. We're trying to like learn more about the world itself in this class as well. So, they're going to talk, Jess and Nick are going to talk about later is Mission Transition, which we do with the freshmen. It's where we meet one-on-one. We split into groups in our class, and we have about eight freshmen each. And we play games, icebreakers. We get to know them. We even have dance battles, which is really fun. We have kindness challenges, which is, Jess will explain. We go around the school, and we try to bring kindness to the whole school, teachers, staff, you know, staff, kids, whatever it is. We like to bring kindness to our school district. And then, we have Teacher Appreciation, which we just did, where we have to be creative and think of creative ways to thank our teachers, our staff, custodians, lunch ladies, all of that. And it's really fun. And then, we are very spontaneous as well. So, when there's current events that occur in the school district or even in the real world, we act on it, just like the Parkland shooting. Jess will talk about that later. We acted spontaneously on that. So, we're very spontaneous, very creative, and we help our freshmen in any way possible.
Thanks, Jared.
Hi, I'm Nick Brophy. I'm a senior. I'm in LFD, and also, I'm on Peer Leadership. I'm a peer leader. And I'm going to talk about what Gianna mentioned already, which was Mission Transition, which is basically self-explanatory. It's, we help the freshmen transition to high school, and we get together with them in like small groups. And it like, it's really, it's a lot better than LFD. LFD is great, but it's a lot better than LFD because we have like one-on-one conversations with them, and we build a bond with them, and build a relationship. And once they get to know us, like, Jared also mentioned LFD, they get to know us even more through this Mission Transition and then they see us in the hallways. And they just feel more comfortable throughout the school. So, basically, what we do in these little meetings is activities with them, like Gianna mentioned, icebreakers, and like, just getting to know them and making them feel as comfortable as possible and welcoming them to our family at Freehold. And, yeah, that's all we do in Mission Transition really. I'm going to invite Jess up now to talk about the kindness challenge.
So, as Gianna was saying, as peer leaders, we do a variety of things for our school community, and we do our best to spread like positive energy around the whole school. So, this year, we did this by creating the kindness challenge. And we had a bucket of all tasks that we went around in lunchrooms. And we asked the students if they wanted to participate. And if they participated, they received a sticker, and they got to wear it around the school. And it allowed the students to see how easy it is to be kind and have the smallest gestures make someone's day. So, we had them go up to kids and ask, like, if someone was sitting alone at lunch, we'd say, do you want to go ask them if they want to sit with you? Or just say hi to someone you usually don't. And we love to spread positivity around the school, but during tragedies, our faculty and administration turned to us as well. And as Gianna was saying, we're very quick to act upon them. So, as issues arise, we have to appropriately address them. And on February 14th, the school shooting occurred in Florida. And as peer leaders, we wanted a way to show our condolences as a school community to the affected people. So, during our class period, the next day, right after it happened, we made banners, and it had all the victims' names on it, and it said Parkland in the middle. And we had all the faculty, administration, students sign it. And everyone was wearing orange ribbons to remember. As peer leaders, it is important for us to lead by example, and we definitely do that here at Freehold Borough. And we create an enjoyable environment while we do it. Thank you.
It'd be great. My tip, one more round of applause for our board members. I just want to say, as they were speaking, you know, the theme of connectedness kind of came out. And these are large comprehensive high schools. And one thing that we're always working to do more of is how our students feel connected to their high school, even though there could be thirteen hundred, twenty-three hundred students in the building. And everything they spoke about was making freshmen, right, all the way up through twelfth grade, feel like they have a place in a larger community. So, I thank you all for the hard work you've done here at Freehold Borough. And now, it's your turn to say. But thank you very much, you guys. Maybe, if you'd like, or you can stay here immediately. Remember, does anyone have any questions for the peer leaders or the Lead for Diversity students?
Great job.
So, board members, if you can't see the screen, feel free, if you want to get up and move. I think Mr. Sampson sent this out in your packets prior to this meeting as well. So, I am going to go through our Violence and Vandalism numbers. Violence and Vandalism numbers. The information you're going to see here tonight captures information from September 2017 up through December 2017. So, this is really the first few months of this school year. As Mr. Sampson said, you know, this is a snapshot of our school district. Keep in mind, we have ten thousand five hundred teenagers in all six of our buildings. So, when you look at these numbers, you know, some of them, they jump out at you if you happen to answer any types of questions. Keep them in perspective in terms of the numbers of students that we have here in our three schools. So, the first slide illustrates some broader categories. So, there's violence, vandalism, weapons, substance abuse, and also harassment, intimidation, bullying. Just as a point of reference, I also included information from the first phase of 2016, 2017. So, you can just get an idea from September 2016 all the way up to this year, December 2017, what numbers would look like year to year. You can look at this data across three years, five years. There's some instances where numbers go up. There's some instances where numbers go down. So, it's not always fair to do a direct comparison, but I did want you to have a point of reference. You can see here, just by looking at these numbers, our violence is almost close, thirteen to seventeen. There were no incidences of vandalism between September of this year and December. Weapons, so that may, it's usually a knife or some type of a blade, a pocket knife. We had five last year. At this time, we were down to three. Deliverance, substance abuse, in 2016, 17 was at sixteen. This year, we're at twenty-eight. So, that number has jumped, and I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on that. You've heard Mr. Sampson speak about the concern we have about e-cigarettes and bakes. That's something that's been prevalent throughout the nation in any high school, even middle school. I was talking to a middle school principal yesterday who's informed me it's even an issue in first school as well. And I'll talk a little bit about what we're doing to hopefully curb that number, bring that back down. Final number on there is harassment, intimidation, bullying. So, you can see, a year ago at this time, there were fourteen. We're at twelve for this school year up until January. This takes the broader category of violence and just breaks it down a little bit further. Simple assault, so this is when you may have a student who physically aggresses towards another student. That student doesn't do anything back. It's considered a simple assault. We were at six to five. Sex offense, there was zero. Threat, we were at one. Fight, we were at six. So, again, numbers are fairly comparable, again, from last year up to this year. This chart here breaks down the broad categories. I'll start with vandalism at the top. This looks good. All zeros. This is not typically an issue within the Freehold Regional High School District. We may have one here or there. Damage to property, thefts, and trespassing. Again, they're all at zero for the first half of this school year. Jumping down to weapons. You'll see the first one is possession of a weapon. You see those instances are like some type of a blade or a pocket knife. They were at three this year, a little bit down from five. Assault with a weapon, so this is where a student would actually have to use Assault with a weapon, so this is where a student would actually have to use something that would be considered a weapon in an assault. We're at zero, previously we're at zero, right now. Down on the bottom, substance abuse. So you can see here, there's four different categories. So there's under the influence, so this would be a student who we would believe to be under the influence of the chemical substance, whether it's drugs or alcohol. When we send them for a chemical screen, that result came back positive. Okay? So you can see here, 2016, 17 was 14. That's 25 for this school year. The next category is something that was added new by the state this year. So you can see not applicable for previous years. So this is substance suspected and the student refused to go for the chemical screen. So there's instances in school where staff members may suspect a student being under the influence. We tell that parent and that student, you must take them for the chemical screen. The parent does have the right to refuse that screen. We look at that from a disciplinary standpoint as a positive result. So in previous years, that would be lumped in with this number here. Now the state's asking us to separate that out. So I did include that for you. So we had three incidences where a parent and student refused to go for the chemical screen. As per our handbook and policy, that's viewed as a positive result. And you know, appropriate discipline and counseling follows up from there. Going to come down to possession. So this would be possession of an illegal chemical substance. We were at seven, you'll see that number goes to 23. And in parentheses, I know it's small, it's 20. So I wanted to illustrate for you, 20 out of those 23 incidences were actually marijuana vapes or the e-cigarettes. So this issue that we keep coming back to. Three were other. Okay? And then when I go to distribution, so this is when a student is actually either selling or giving drugs to somebody else. We were at zero at that time, we were at one. And that one instance was also distribution or sale of a marijuana vape. Many of you may remember back in January, Mr. Sampson actually issued a letter to parents just explaining what these marijuana vapes were, why they're dangerous, why parents need to be aware. So we're continually trying to get our community involved. We had a evening presentation a few weeks ago at Coltsneck High School trying to educate parents on the dangers of these vapes. The biggest concern with them, and we're not hiding from them, is they're easily concealed. So they're smaller than a little clicker that I have in my hand and students can quickly make them go away. So we've really stepped up our patrols in bathrooms, having security administrators go in, making teachers aware of what these items are educating them. You know, our biggest, I think, success is really catching students in the act. You know, we have them come down, they're obviously searched, they're sent for a mandatory chemical screen. And then the biggest component, obviously we have the discipline. Most importantly is we have follow-up counseling with our student assistance coordinator. So it's not just educating the students. What the student assistance coordinators are telling me is really educating the parents. Because these devices are really marketed towards young teenagers, unfortunately, despite what the media may say. And a lot of parents say, "Oh yeah, it's fine, and you know, it's not just a cigarette, oh, it's just vapor." So our SACS have done a lot of work trying to educate them. And a lot of parents have called and said, "Wow, I'm really glad you told me that." I know Mr. Sampson's letter, there were parents calling some of our SACS and saying, "I turned my kid's room upside down last night and here's what I found and thank you for doing that." So we're going to continue, you know, to push back on this, but it's really a societal issue. We're seeing it manifest here in all of our high schools and even middle schools. Okay? This chart here just outlines the types of illegal substances used. So you can see, I'll just read them all to you. At the top here is marijuana, unauthorized prescription drugs, alcohol, drug paraphernalia, narcotics, amphetamines, over-the-counter drugs, cocaine, depressants and hallucinogens. You can see that this year, okay, we had 24 incidences dealing with marijuana. Okay? And then only one with unauthorized prescription drugs. All of these other drugs or legal substances were at zero. Just, you know, for quick comparisons, the previous years marijuana was at 15. We had no unauthorized prescription drugs, alcohol was at three, drug paraphernalia at two, and we had the precedent at one. Clearly, you know, we see the marijuana jumping and again, we attribute that to the marijuana vapes that we've been trying to combat. The chart here details the confirmed harassment, intimidation, bullying incidents. So these are the incidents Mr. Sampson reached around in executive session. This actually lays out the number of incidences that we did deem to be harassment, intimidation, bullying. The map goes on, there is a process, obviously there's usually discipline involved, there's counseling for the students, follow-up, possible class changes and monitoring of the students involved. You can see the total number, we were at 14 at this time last year, we were at 12 this year. And again, this number can fluctuate. So just a point of comparison, you can see some numbers jumped. October last year, we were at six, we had four in September, but only one previously. But again, we're usually around the same place, we do a lot of proactive work. The students who are here tonight, as you heard, really helped to educate students on this and how they can be a better citizen. The chart here details alleged HIB incidentes. So this is an example where a student or a parent or a teacher may say, "I think this might be a HIB incident." And we investigate it as such. After the investigation's conducted, we realize it doesn't meet the legal definition of HIB as per the anti-bullying bill rights. But we do have to record that we did the investigation. It may not have been HIB, but the student may have been addressed through their code of conduct or through counseling or some other means. Total numbers, we were at six this year, previously we were at eight. Again, the numbers can kind of jump, but they're pretty close to our previous years. And finally, I just wanted to kind of outline some of the programs that we have here in the Freehold Regional that really are proactive to try to keep these numbers as low as possible, again, within reason. You can see I listed a whole bunch on the left from our counseling services, our guidance counselors, our student assistance coordinators, all the way to the programs for the orientation and transitions that our LFD students spoke about. Peer leaders, CD for diversity, legal respect and anti-violence. These are all areas where we try to educate not just our students, but also our faculty and our parents on some proactive things that we can do to make sure kids are making good decisions. To the right side of the screen, I did include some of the parent programs that we had this year. The first one was vaping the smoke screen, that was by Doug Collier. He's presented multiple times to our students, our faculty in the district. He came in and spoke to a group of parents at Coltsneck High School. Again, one of the biggest things is getting the parents on board. You know, they can turn over their kid's bedroom, they can, you know, check their things every day. They have that ability that we don't always have or so easily have. So getting that message out and letting them know, hey, this is dangerous, don't believe what you hear or read, and spread the word to your neighbor, you know, is really powerful. By the same token, right, our students are dealing with more and more each day. They have social media. We hear a lot about stress and anxiety, so we brought in a professional, Dr. Matt Bellis, who actually put on a great presentation a few weeks ago over at Marlboro High School on how parents can help their child deal with stress and cope in healthy ways. So we don't want kids turning to drugs or alcohol, making poor decisions. And his message was, you don't have to do that, you know, put the phone down, get your kid outside, get them involved. So that connected piece, right? Get them involved in their high school and one of these great groups that you see here are athletics. Because when they don't have those good connected activities to do, they're going towards more negative, you know, choices. So these are just some of the things we do in district. We'll continue to do these and every year we enhance and build upon this. So again, you know, we thank the Board of Education for your support of all our programs and certainly all the administrators here as well. Thank you.
So, you know, the students and Mr. Dillon both spoke to connectivity and having students involved in programs and being a part of the high school. You know, in light of yet another mass shooting in high schools in Texas this time. You know, I was, I was on the phone with the town official earlier today. And he literally said, "So what do you, you know, what do you think's the solution to this?" And it's so many different problems of a societal issue. And there's no one right answer. But I will say this, that it bothers me to my core when we have a student who has made a poor decision and we go through their social media accounts and their activity and the communication that they've put out with other folks and the parents have no idea. They're completely disconnected from the young person's life, at least that aspect of their life. And there's ways to certainly hide that. And then, you know, getting students involved as early as possible in the high school, incoming ninth graders, having people feel, having the students feel a part of a community, a part of something. Encouraging parents and guardians to get their children to just get involved in even one thing at the school and be connected to it in a different way. We're going to, you know, we're going to continue to have, unfortunately, an awful lot of security conversations. But I think the issue is so much deeper than that in our society at this point in time. I think that folks need to take a step back and understand that what kids are dealing with in 2018 are so fundamentally different from what we have dealt with as children and as young adults. We need to make some really sharp changes about what, what all of that looks like in terms of monitoring it in a positive and proactive way. And I think that any, any high school in America that says something like this can't happen here is just flat out lying to you. You know, we're living in oblivion, you know? So we all have a responsibility, we have a collective responsibility. I think it's really difficult to be a teenager in 2018. I think it's as difficult as it's ever been to be a teenager. And I, you know, I don't, I don't pretend to have all the answers, but I know that we have to continue to work together as a community to improve the experience for every single student in our, in our system. So, you know, a few other notes on my report. We're into the spring, we're at the close of the school year. A wise person once told me if we didn't put an end to the school year, we'd actually never end. You know, you just keep going to event after event after event. I know that I'm about to eat an inordinate number of chicken dinners over the next three weeks at our celebratory evening events. You know, and there was something on the calendar, even looking for a policy committee date earlier today. It was pushed out to June 19th because there are so many activities and events that are occurring in the school system. And they're wonderful events, you know? This is the time of year where it starts to come to a close and it's important to celebrate, you know, the school year and the accomplishment. So we're moving into that, you know, fully at this point in time. Friday is a makeup, early dismissal day, snow day. So we did utilize six of those days this year. You know, it's been, it's just been one of the wackiest weather years we've had. So it is what it is. Our referendum update, the board, you know, passed the resolution last meeting to move forward on the referendum. I encourage everyone to take a look at the website that we've developed explaining the referendum in detail. We are starting with different, different meetings with different groups across the larger community. That will pick up in earnest toward, you know, certainly toward the end of the summer and into the early fall with the October 2nd referendum date. I am incredibly proud of the work we did to really prioritize what's important, working forward, moving forward and to balance our responsibility to the school district with our responsibility to the larger, larger community in terms of being good financial stewards. This Wednesday night, we have a strategic planning meeting at Coltsneck High School. The board members have certainly been invited to attend that. We have a number of community members, students, faculty and staff attending. And remember, when we developed the next iteration of our strategic plan, Compass 2.0, it was really important for us to build a plan, a long-term plan that had the framework of what we needed to plan for long-term, but really had some nimbleness to it within the short-term in setting annual goals and how we were achieving things in a timely manner. And understanding that sometimes the world around us changes so quickly that having a five-year plan on the shelf does you no good unless you're reacting in a positive way to different trends and changes that may have been unforeseen in your initial planning. So we're proud of that. Certainly invite everybody out to that evening and it will be an update.
I'm sorry, could you say Wednesday again?
It's Wednesday evening at Coltsneck High School at 6:00. We also have the annual Teacher of the Year Luncheon at Monmouth University. It's something that the county organization, the superintendents group in the county does every year to honor our various teachers and support professionals of the year. This year, we're proud, Mr. Todd Curtis is the actual Monmouth County Teacher of the Year. So he'll get to give a little speech at that, at that event. That's this Thursday, the 24th. And it's just, it's an awesome luncheon to recognize individuals across all six high schools who've been recognized by their peers, which I think is, you know, sort of the greatest stamp of approval. And I just wanted to note, and Mrs. Jewel and I attended the MedSci closing ceremonies at Center State Hospital last week. And the connectivity to the hospital is really the, sort of the hub for our community partnerships that I think every other community partnership has really been modeled after over the past several years. And, you know, so I went to the MedSci closing ceremony and the Ed Foundation folks from there, Center State are there. And John Griffin, the CEO of Center State is there and it's a, you know, wonderful luncheon. And then as I'm, as I'm walking out into the parking lot, Mrs. Jewel was flagging me down and saying, "Oh, did you see..." So we had a bunch of our PEP students from Freehold Township also at Center State that come once a week to use the facilities and get exposure to that. So I'm literally walking through the hospital and running into students from multiple high schools that are partnered with that community hospital. And I think it's a really powerful partnership. And we've grown out our community partnerships the past couple of years and we've modeled it off of that. But I don't think the larger community often knows just how deeply embedded we are with Center State Hospital. So I just, it was, it was sort of an aha moment. Next week, we have our Unified Track and Field Meet here at Freehold High School. It was a rain date, it's Tuesday, right Jason? On Tuesday for Unified?
Yeah.
So we moved it to Tuesday. That's a terrific event as well that we really started, started in earnest last year. And John Heinz here is very instrumental in getting that off the ground for us last year. It was hosted in Manalapan, we're doing it internally, just our district this year. So looking forward to that event. Prom season is upon us, you know? And we do have grade level assemblies with those students to really just remind them about, you know, just making good decisions and what that, what that constitutes. I'm proud of, you know, the proms that have rolled out so far, students have conducted themselves exceptionally. I mean, it's, you know, it's something to be proud about. On June 11th, we are confirming this, but I'm hoping that it happens. You know, there is, Dr. Repolet is the new acting commissioner in the state of New Jersey. There's a lot of conversation around standardized assessments and what that looks like moving forward. We've gotten some guidance over the past week that a little convoluted to say the least. And as the, as the Department of Ed moves forward in sort of reimagining what the role of standardized assessments are here in the state of New Jersey, they're hosting sort of open, you know, listening and presentation sessions where they're going across the state. And we, right now, are hopefully locked in to host one of those sessions on June 11th at Manalapan High School. And I would encourage folks to come out and really see, you know, you know, articulate your perspective on what it means as a faculty member, a parent, a student. And it's a wonderful opportunity to actually host that in our backyard. So you don't have to, you know, lug it down to Trenton to actually go on record about your perspective. And I thank the Garden State Coalition of Schools, of which I'm an executive officer, because they helped to facilitate that conversation to get it here. And then one final note, and, you know, over the past couple of weeks, if, for anyone who follows the missives that I put out on Twitter from time to time, you'll see that Senator Sweeney has put forth a bill that's looking at potentially $500 million in career and technical education grants and security upgrades. But right now, the way that that bill is written, it would go solely to county vocational schools. And I think what's, what's unimaginable to me is that 60% of the CTE programs in the state of New Jersey are actually housed in public comprehensive high schools. So why would we put forth a $500 million bill that only goes to where 40% of the kids are and not 60% that are in other programs? And, you know, we, we are, we, through a And, you know, we, we are, we got, we, through a competitive process, got the, the CTE pathways grant through the state a couple of years ago. And it was a $500,000 grant over five years. And what we've done right here at Freehold High School with that money is put together two exceptional CTE programs for our students right here. We could certainly replicate that process across our six high schools easily enough with any of that funding. And, um, I don't think that the public is always aware of where the money is going. I don't, I don't for a second want to take away any of the opportunities in this county. I think that the, the, the more opportunities for kids, the better. But I do question the funding of those opportunities. And when we are charged a tuition to fund the county vocational and charge transportation that is not subject to the general out-of-district transportation rules, on top of that, we are paying more than double per pupil. When you then pull the thread even further and in some of the academies, they're disproportionately Freehold Regional High School Geographic Footprint residents, we are paying for a lot of that funding. You should not rob Peter to pay Paul, right? Those opportunities should exist, but the county and the state should come up with a way that supports them in a more effective manner and certainly addresses the transportation issues underlying that. Because, so folks understand, when you have an out-of-district student who chooses to, let's say, attend a, 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 a private school outside of the 20-mile range from our, from their home, they, they are entitled to something that's known as aid in lieu of a transportation fund. And that comes out to somewhere around $884 a year, right, Mr. Boyce? Look at that, it's just right off my head. Um, so about $884 a year. We are not subject to the same thing. So if we're sending somebody in a county vocational that's outside of that range, it may cost us $7,000 or $8,000 for the bus run alone. That money shouldn't come out of our fund at that rate, or there should be some sort of protection. So, I have been advocating like crazy, uh, the Garden State has given, um, a, a, you know, significant testimony about this between the Joint, um, Committee on Education and, and the legislature. And I think it's, it's a potential issue that the public needs to be brought up to speed on. And I want to be clear, it is not ever about stopping any of those other opportunities. It is purely about how they are funding it. Um, and you can't do it where it's having such a negative impact to our budget, you know? For, for, for five of those programs, that's $5.5 million a year out of our budget. It's, it's exceptional. All right. And then finally, um, one note, uh, the board over the past couple of meetings, and we can pick this up again when we go through the agenda, Mr. Messinger, um, but has talked about a potential resolution, um, against the legalization of recreational marijuana. I, I will say that if you looked at Mr. Dillon's presentation, the Violence and Vandalism presentation, um, vaping with marijuana is becoming an epidemic. It is an epidemic. So we went through a, a eight-to-10-year period where you didn't, you really didn't have ver, you had hardly anyone smoking in your school any longer. It went away almost. It is coming back with vapes to such, uh, to, to a higher degree than what it was. I don't think the parents realize that these things are equally as bad for, for students, uh, heavily addictive. And I think if you lay over the ongoing vape issue with legalizing marijuana, it's a recipe for disaster in our, in our public schools. So there's a potential resolution there that would be on as addendum. The board can certainly discuss that as you see fit and, and take whatever action you see fit. We compile that off of the request of the, the whole board. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Public participation, is there anyone signed up to the student? Not that I've been notified of. Anybody? Okay. We move on. Okay, is one items G1 through J12, uh, so just for everyone's notification. This also includes two shared services agreements. We're entering to H6 is with Marlboro Patchard regarding, um, test rate officer, and then H7 is with respect of Freehold Borough, uh, and their 21st Century program, uh, providing transportation, allowing them to use Manalapan High School. So, does that say J, right? Yeah, J12. Uh, does anybody want to put forth a motion to adopt the resolution to accept these items?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. We'll call. Just, just for quick letters, G1 through J12. Yes, sir. Is there any, does anybody want to discuss anything just from G1 through J12?
Mrs. Capello?
Um, yes on everything except for G14, and that's an extension.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhouser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
All right, addressing items K1 through K4, and K4 is the approval of a resolution opposing the legalization of recreational marijuana that Mr. Sampson referenced before. Um, so, in order to have a discussion about this and potentially make any changes that any board members want to make, uh, does anybody want to put forth a motion to adopt the resolution to accept K1 through K4?
Motion. Motion. Second.
Okay. Second. All right then, so, um, just wrapping, circling back to K4, K4, um, I think we, on several occasions, heard from Mr. Sampson about this issue, and if you look at the resolution that's in place, um, there's some specific data that's in there referencing Colorado, which probably is the most notorious, uh, example of a state that's approved use of recreational marijuana. And there's some data in there with respect to the negative impact to teenagers. And of course, we saw in our Violence, Vandalism and Substance Abuse Report, uh, the increase in substance abuse. Um, and getting back to something else that Mr. Dillon had talked about with respect to the reducing stress, uh, presentation at Marlboro High School with Matt Bellis, one of the things that he talked about, again, was the negative impact to a teenager's brain, uh, who uses marijuana. So, even though the politicians will say, well, this is, you know, going to be legal for people 21 and over, um, just look at what's transpiring right now, when there's not widespread use of marijuana and how much is being used by students in our district, and as Mr. Sampson says, it is an epidemic. And, you know, as Mr. Sampson has also said, once you go up Route 18 and Route 9 and the expansion of retail opportunities, I think we all know that it's going to be so more easily accessible for our students. So, the one thing, the biggest reason why I wanted to bring this to the forefront is because when the politicians talk about it, all they talk about is the money, the tax revenue, and it's a social justice issue. I really never have seen any politician in the state of New Jersey look at the impact to teenagers. And, you know, we have 10,500 teenagers under our purview, and I just felt if the administration, the teachers and the board is in charge of protecting the health, safety and welfare of teenagers, I don't think there's anyone that could say widespread use of marijuana for those 21 and up is going to positively impact and not negatively impact the welfare of our teens. So that's really the rationale behind why I wanted to bring this to, uh, the forefront, and I'd like to open it up. If any other board members feel like they want to add something to this resolution or give their opinion of it, we could certainly do that. Again, I feel, um, comfortable with the fact that, and I don't want to speak for anyone, whether they'll support it or not, but, you know, we have former teachers, former administrators, and we have a registered nurse on this board. Um, and so anyone could feel free to, you know, give their firsthand experience with this issue and what their opinions are.
Mike, I just have to say, I think, I went to high school and college in the 70s and 80s where, you know, marijuana wasn't a big deal. So I don't know what happened in the last 30, 40 years as I've been out of college and high school as a student, but the thing that bothers me the most about this, and I had a lot of friends who are politicians and we debated it, is that we're using this as a fundraiser to raise money, just like we did with casino gambling, just like we did for the lottery. And look how that has done for our state. Our taxes are still going up. So, this is what bothersome to me, is that it's really about fundraising for our state and nobody talks about cutting anything. You know, I mean, I'm in hell, my taxes are $11,000. Um, you know, I'm working two part-time jobs, but, I mean, I love my home, but I just don't think the marijuana thing, I mean, we had 24 in our district, that's just 24 kids that we caught. Okay, god only knows, it could be 75, it could be 100. So, um, and seeing these baker shops, it just bothersome to me to see this going on. So, I mean, I haven't been asleep the last 40 years, but like marijuana hasn't been to me, and this is maybe how I was brought up, not a good thing, a gateway drug. So, I, I don't know, like, it's just about fundraising. It's just about raising money. And, you know, social justice, you know, the social justice thing though, I don't want our kids to be getting high, I just don't. So, um, I'm definitely, I think it was well done, it was all written. And your presentation is very good.
Thank you.
Michael, uh, we all know that, you know, over the course of the years, uh, kids a while ago that were in high school when I was working, um, some of them were very heavily involved in marijuana. And what we're seeing now is we're seeing them in their 30s and their 40s and they're overdosing. They're dying, okay? So anybody who can look at me and say that this is not a gateway drug, or that it's really not harmful, you know, it's harmless, it's full of lung, I don't know what they're talking about. Because these kids that were heavily involved are dying off.
They're dying off, so heroin, heroin.
Right.
You know, and my professional opinion, I agree, there's no way you can't say that this is not something that's harmful, that it's, you know, it, it is the start to an addictive process. And in today's world, the addictive process has become so, so deadly that, um, anything that we can do to stop at the beginning is what we need to do. We need to, we need to put our voices forward and, and say that, you know, this is not acceptable. Um, and I agree that it's, it's, it's finance, it's money, it's dollars and cents. It's not thinking about the impact on, on the health and welfare of the citizens of the state, most certainly not the students, but it's how much money we can, we can, um, recruit from this venture, um, which, which ultimately will probably fail, you know, it'll fail probably first in Colorado and whatever, but, you know, we won't wait that long, we'll just jump on the bandwagon and, um...
If you read this, it's failing in Colorado now.
President.
Exactly. I don't see that, I mean...
Anybody else have any comments? All right then, so we have a motion out there for K1 through K4, looking at the resolution we've just been discussing. Please take your own, Mr. Boyce.
Mrs. Capello?
Um, yes on everything except K1. I'm going to abstain on, on Dr. Hazel and Mr. Sampson.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhouser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, on everything except for K1, Charles Sampson.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
All right, uh, is there any old business to discuss? You know what we have to do, which I failed to, uh, mention, and I apologize, Mr. Moses, we have to go back in time and look at the Finance Committee, as we had a meeting last week. We have to move back and on the agenda.
Oh, we're going backwards? We're going backwards. Okay, you pulled on the right person, we're going backwards. Okay, uh, we had a Finance Committee meeting, uh, R paid to, like, three different firms, um, for the auditors, and, uh, I guess the, uh, the board will be voting on that next week, is it?
Next.
Next board meeting, which is June 11th.
All right, do we know what other committees, correct?
No, there's a policy meeting, it's going to be in March.
Okay. All right, with respect to old business, any old business? Uh, new business?
Uh, two things. So, uh, we, we approved two new administrators tonight, so Jennifer Williams, if you stand up, Jen York. Jen is our current guidance supervisor, Director of Guidance Services, People's Services at Freehold Township High School. Uh, Jen has been in that capacity for, uh, five years now, has done an excellent job, uh, is moving into the Assistant Principal role at Freehold Township, and we know she's going to do great things. She's already had me involved with so many things on the school level that it would be a very easy transition. So Jen, congratulations. We'd like to have Meredith Adams, may I raise your hand, because it doesn't name. So Meredith is, uh, the new Supervisor of Science for us. Uh, she comes to us, um, most recently from Little Silver, where she's the K8 Supervisor of Math and Science. Uh, previously before that from Jackson, uh, School District, uh, where she was, uh, involved as a grant writer primarily, but high school math and science as well, and coordinated some of their AP work there. So Meredith, congratulations. Welcome aboard.
All right, anything else on the new business? All right then, we're going to move on to item N. Does anybody want to put forth a motion to adopt the resolution to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?